I'm only going to Stewart, so I'm not going all the way to Miami.
I think my nephew would run Epstein's house for two weeks in the summer.
I don't do beaches. I'm old. Yeah. John Ross. Oh, yes, this is his favorite aunt and uncle. Yeah. Oh, yeah. He's counting on there being yet another birthday.
He's a nice guy, very creative.
All right.
You ready, sir?
Ready. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At 7:00 PM, please rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we begin our meeting this evening, would you join me in a moment of silence? We have lost from our town, from his family, and from the zoning board Mark Sawaski. Mr. Sawaski served on the zoning board of review for 20 years and a period of that as chair. We are indebted to him and his service, and we would just like to recognize that by a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Are there any other announcements that need to be made?
I'd just like to say that Mark Sawaski, I knew him very well. I think he was a really good athlete.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any others? The next item is approval of the minutes of March 10th.
Motion to approve the March 10th, 2022 town council meetings unless anybody has any comments or questions on them.
Second.
Motion made in second. It is their discussion. All in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next are the department head reports. We have two, one from Public Works, the other from the Assessor.
I'm going to make a motion to place them both on file, but I would like to ask of you one question on the transfer station.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's made in seconded. Yes, sir.
It, um... Is it the time of the year? It seems like we're, our recycling is getting better. Is that...
It is. It is an artifact of February. As you look back over history, every February, we recycle proportion... First of all, we collect relatively less, and we recycle, for whatever reason, more.
Right.
And so we get this spike, which then does not, does not persist typically, and March, April, and May start to fall off again.
Yeah, because I see it's close to 40%, which is... If we could keep that all year long, I think that would be really great.
Right. I'm, I'm, I believe it's the denominator that changes. I believe the solid waste goes up, and regardless of the rather modest recycling, it soon overwhelms the recycling bucket.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saving, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is old business. It's a proposal for the extension for the 20th time of Special Directive 5, which extends the state of emergency in the town.
Motion approves. Special Directive number 5, revision 20.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Uh, nay.
Two votes nay and three votes in favor. Okay? Thank you. The next item is a draft resolution for consideration regarding municipal broadband services. As you may recall, we had a resolution from another town. I've modified that, and what you see before you is my proposal for our resolution that we voted we wanted to do similarly.
I've read this over. I'd make a motion to adopt this resolution and send it to the General Assembly.
Second. Motion made in seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Four to one with Counselor Galvin. The next item is a recommendation on use of grant funds received from Discover Newport. Counselor, maybe you, would you speak on behalf of the group, or, I'm sorry, both of you are part of the group?
So, your Andrew's effort that you've got a $7,500 grant and you just, we figured Wilbur Woods would be a very applicable thing to put it to, and did it go through, or...
Yeah, we, um, we met last week and discussed a number of projects, but we did have a request from the Wilbur Woods Committee, which did include some, some proj... They've got a number of projects that they're working on, and there were a couple of things specifically that they could use the money towards, which included a informational kiosk and kind of recreating a parking area to make it safer and more convenient, and also additional signage in there.
Good.
But it would free up some resources for them to use towards the reconstruction of the bridges and the road going around the back. So I think it's a really good project.
And this grant was given to us specifically designating, for example, parks and that sort of thing. Was that part of the...
Yes, mainly for, you know, public enjoyment. It was very broad, so...
But it certainly fits the Wilbur Woods.
Yeah. Parks, hiking, trail walks, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Good. Is there then a motion to accept the recommendation of the three persons that we appointed to go look at this for us?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good work. It's the kind of thing that we need to get. The next item is a discussion of a vacancy in the third alternate member of the zoning board of review. We have a letter of interest that remains on file from a resident. That resident's Jonathan Babbitt, whom we interviewed. We chose a different person from two people that applied. My question to you is, do you wish to appoint Jonathan Babbitt, having interviewed him, or what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jonathan Babbitt.
I'll second it.
Discussion on that?
I don't, I don't have any problem with it, but is this something that we've done in the past, or we've never really been...
I don't remember facing a thing where we got suddenly yet a second vacancy that occurs relatively shortly after an interview, and where we had two candidates that I think, if I remember correctly, we were pleased with both and decided to choose one over the other.
Sometimes, as a year goes by, I think it's appropriate to re-advertise and interview again. But since this was only, what was that, a couple of months ago?
Yeah.
That we interviewed, and I think they interviewed both well, so that's why I moved to appoint Jonathan Babbitt.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is to designate the town administrator to serve in this role, the town's Drug and Al... I'll get it right here. Drug and Alcohol Consortium Designated Employer Representative. We do not have such a person, and we are asked to have such a person. And that is the person, it seems to me, is the right answer. And then the second step would be to update the town code in the next code supplement to identify the administrator as that person.
Motion to designate the town administrator to serve as the town's Drug and Alcohol Consortium Designated Employer Representative.
Thank you.
What a title. I'll second it.
He's going to get bogged down with that title.
The motion is made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a request from United Congregational Church to hold a prayer vigil and walk for Ukraine on March 27th, starting on the north lawn of the church campus and hoping to walk twice around the commons.
I talked to Reverend Rebecca, and I told her to make sure that she got the police involved, which she's already done. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this. It's going to be like a, from what she's talking about, like a Memorial Day parade walk around Buckstee. So I don't think it's going to be a problem.
And as you say, thank you. The motion is made. Is there a second? Motion seconded. The police chief has already...
That was my question.
...made his preparation.
Yes, Chief's on board. Okay.
Yeah. All right. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saving, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a letter from Police Chief Rains presenting the name of Stuart D. Bremen for interview at our next meeting or prior to our next meeting. Time to be set by us. This is our first candidate in the chief's initiative to establish what he is calling... Help me with the name. It's Reserve Officers. Reserve Officers, which the town has had in the past, but has not had recently. I don't know that they've gone by that name, but these are people who have already passed, have gone to the academy, have been evaluated by the police officers standardization team, and they come to us fully certified, and it enables us to put them quickly into the, into the role of riding with another officer and then quickly into...
Do we, do we want to do that here in front of a meeting, or do we want to do it at the public safety complex? Why don't we do it before our next council meeting at 6:30? 6:30? Yeah. Our next one is what, Carol, the 7th?
7th of April.
Yeah.
Motion to interview Mr. Stuart Bremen at 6:30 before our next council meeting, which is April 7th, 2022.
I'll second it.
Motion made in seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thanks. The next item is a letter from Fire Chief Petrin recommending probationary firefighter Matthew Hughes be appointed firefighter third class. This removes him from the probationary status and moves him on to his next grade, effective March 22nd.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is a application received from Dionysus Acquisition LLC doing business as Carolyn's Sakonat Vineyard to secure a Class BV retail beverage license for their facility at 162 West Main Road. And our task here is to consider how to proceed with that application.
Mr. Chair, may I recuse, as I have since, at least since February 20th, 2020, I have an updated recusal to hand to you, to hand to the clerk. And I would suggest, even though I'm not giving advice, I'm giving advice to seek advice from Councilor Gerard Galvin. I know that he is involved with one matter that still lingers out there that I'm no longer involved with. I do believe that he's served the town well, not only matters involving this matter, but also he is, from time to time, stepping on zoning issues. So he knows our setup, he knows you, Tony, and of course Peter, our building officials. I would suggest that I'd run us a caution. You might meet with Mr. Galvin and Tony and Peter, and that might put you in good standing.
Thank you. Thank you. The general manager Cynthia Roach is with us, and I wonder, Cynthia, would you like to make any kind of a statement to us? You are welcome to do so. You are not obligated to do so.
Sure. I can elaborate on the letter and email that he corresponded with.
Excuse me, just one second. Would it be helpful if we used the microphone? Thank you, if you would do that. I realize in this teeming audience, it's probably...
It's quieter than most, so... So we're here looking for consideration for a BV license for the vineyard, and as we stated in our letter, it's for a couple of reasons. One is many of our partners in the vineyard and winery industry are offering distilled spirits and beer as part of their menu, and to remain competitive as a vineyard and winery, and also offer our guests a more well-rounded experience and kind of broaden our customer base. We're hoping that we would get approval for that as well. We've been serving alcohol and food to the community and our guests for almost 50 years. We're New England's oldest winery and vineyard, and we've been doing it responsibly, and it's just an extension of our product line. Our teams are tip certified. They're all trained to, you know, understand when someone has either overconsumed and when to turn people off if necessary, so we feel as though we're the perfect candidate to have this license in the community because of the history that we have.
Questions from the council?
No, I think we're going to have to have Mr. Galvin, you know, look at it to, because we're asked, they're, they're expanding their... How do I explain that? Not the expanding the consumption of alcohol there, but they're, they're leaving the wine zone and going somewhere further. So I don't know what the technicalities and legalities of all that entail. And I'm just being honest with you.
It's part of, we wouldn't be serving it as part of our tasting experience. It would be within the realms of the food experience that we have. So the restaurant, it's been called a cafe in the past, but it's a sit-down, table-side dining experience that's separate from our tastings. So it would be confined to that tasting room. We've sent you a few pictures of...
Right.
What the cafe experience has been in the past, interior during inclement weather, directly on the front lawn outside the main building. I'm not talking about the large lawn. I'm talking about, so it's, it would be separate from our tasting experience. It would be more of a restaurant, and then our tasting room would still only serve Sakonat.
So are you, and again, I'm asking out of ignorance here, are you saying this would be restricted to just the cafe?
Right.
Is that the intent?
Yes.
It's not the intent that when, when someone can go out in the field...
Not at all.
With a beer or a rum and coke?
We also have to be able to manage it, so we understand that that is not something, and we had that, you know, from the initial application, we understand that that is obviously something that we wouldn't want for the vineyard. We, the, the winery is our primary business, but this is something that we can offer our guests to have while they're consuming a lunch or an early dinner, and they can, and we can expose ourselves to other customers. We have customers who come in and say, oh, my brother doesn't like wine, so we didn't try. Okay, well, he might be able to come and, and learn more about what we do there in terms of our farming and the conservation efforts that happen, and, and just the town in general. So it is just the cafe experience, the table-side dining. There is, we have that main bar. You've been in there before, so that square bar in the main building. And then it would be interior during inclement weather, and we would utilize our deck if it's raining outside. And then if not, we would spill over onto that front lawn right out front, which is where the cafes historically operate. So there will be no full alcohol alcohol and gale or evening for the barn, the barn for that matter, which is our season tasting.
So there's going to be no expansion of the cooking area?
No, we operate out of the same, which we have right now, and, and, which has been able to successfully operate that area.
Just trying to understand whether there's going to be an expansion of use. Doesn't seem like there's going to be an expansion of use, foot-wise anyways. I didn't know whether it was going to spill over into one of the other buildings.
No.
So it's just, I mean, I don't think I'm going to have a problem with staying into the tasting room, because that's basically what you've done previously with the wines.
Right.
Staying in there, so, okay. But I think we do need to get some, follow my class, some legal input on it.
Okay.
Any other questions? To be clear, the vineyard has, on a annual basis, has its license issued by the state as a vineyard. It also has had a victualling license from the town, which permits them to serve food in accompaniment with the wine. And this constitutes a change that would permit the serving of other forms of alcohol and would do so in a, in a similar circumstance with what, what they're serving now.
Okay. So, my guess is that we're not going to be voting on this tonight, obviously.
Correct.
So I, I won't wait for discussion since there'll be no, there'll be no motion.
There's, I would propose that we not have a motion this evening in order for us to gain some...
Right, I figured that.
Information from the attorney.
Cynthia, I think that's a great idea. I would love to go there and then have dinner and have a drink, so you know. But it's our responsibility here to just ask some questions. I'm just going to throw these out there. For them, and I only got this two days ago. I only get the agenda two days in advance. So I'm not a expert on things. I only have 48 hours for. So there may be a mistake or two in what I'm going to say. Who knows?
No problem.
But it's really more for the lawyer who's not here, since our solicitor has recused himself. So it's my understanding that the vineyard is in a residential zone. The zoning ordinance C-13 restrains lunchrooms, cafes, taverns, prohibits use in residential zone. That's the first thing. The second thing is, you know, the question of, you know, can other, I guess, farmers slash agriculturists, can they now open a restaurant, you know? So whatever that question needs to be answered. And obviously, is there a zoning variance, a special permit in a B-zone for a business? You know, is there an intensification of a currently non-conforming, you know, legal use, which might require a special use permit from the zoning board? Again, I'm a lawyer. Would, would tell us that. And also, I think, lastly, you know, the agricultural trust is consistent with the conservation easements over there. So I don't know if the Ag Trust needs to be involved, or, you know, what that looks like. That's just the 48 hours that I've saw, but I would love to go and eat and drink there, because certainly the town needs another spot or two.
Thanks.
So I'm going to make a motion that we pass this along to Attorney Gerard Galvin and get a response back from him or a report back from him on his thoughts on it.
Second. Motion made in seconded to refer the matter to Attorney Galvin as our substitute for the recused solicitor. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much for your information. The next item is an email received from Carter Wilkie, asking the council to consider applying for funds and installing an electric vehicle charging station in Little Compton.
I asked, I think we all got a copy of this letter. Not positive we did, but...
It, it did go to the...
Okay, so anyways, I asked the town council president to ask the clerk to put it on the agenda to speak of. I think we all understand that electric vehicles are going to be, the way it's getting pushed, are going to be a thing of the future. I think people in town that have electric vehicles, and I know there are a few, do their charging at home at night so they can get back and forth to work. But my concern is if we do have people coming into town, I know on a gas situation that I help out people because they run out of gas on Sakonat Point, so I always keep 10 or 20 gallons of gas to help them out. But who's going to help out a guy with an electric vehicle? So Mr. Wilkie seems to have laid it out that this wouldn't, from what I'm reading on his letter, that it wouldn't cost anything, and there are funds available. And it says, "In addition, National Grid Office rebates of up to 100% of installation costs for select Level 2 or Direct Current Fast DC Fast Charging Stations at workplaces, business, multi-unit dwellings, and medical campuses." So I'm not sure whether that would fall under anything we could get reimbursed for. If this is going to cost us money, then I'm have, would like to take a second look at it. But my thought was maybe we could put a couple of these charges down somewhere near the basketball court. So if people come into town and they see, see like they're not going to have enough electricity to get out, they can maybe, you know, if they're stopped by the side of the road, they can ask a police officer if there is a charging station, and they can go up there and charge it. And I think, another thing, I think this, on the same, along the same lines, I think we all feel very bad. There's no gas station in town. But my personal feeling on that is if anybody could figure out a way to get a gas station back in town or come up with a plan to get a gas station in town. I know DM's pretty stiff on regulations, but I think the council would really welcome somebody to come forward to see if they could do something or have a facility where they could start serving gas in town again. So my motion on this would be to have the town administrators reach out to Carter Wilkie and work with him to see what needs to be done to get these charging stations in town. And like I say, it seems, Mr. Wilkie seems to really have a background in this, and if we can give something for, for nothing, I think it's a good project and put a couple of stations in town, a couple of charging stations in town. So I would ask him, the town administrator, to reach, reach out to Mr. Wilkie and see if he'd be willing to help out with this project.
Second. Motion's made in seconded. Is there further discussion?
Only that Gary needs to keep his gas can and a generator now down the point. Well, I was thinking that, so what am I going to have to go get a generator on the back of the car? Because you don't know how many people go to Sakonat, and they come up, because Jimmy's got his business right there, and say, is there any gas stations around? And when you tell them 12 miles back up the road, oh, no, I'll never make it. I said, well, I'll give you a gallon of gas, get back where you're going.
I think your motion and the second get us going in the direction that Carter Wilkie has suggested. I also concur with you that in keeping with this, we need to be about the business of finding a way to get a gas station in town, because I believe that that's, that's also high up on citizens' list of things that they'd like to do.
So, yeah, I concur, Gary, with these sentiments. I think we need to be proactive. I think it's a no-brainer. It's not going to cost us any money. All you need is a little spot for it, for one car to charge up, so, you know, I don't want to, you know, here, we don't have space for it. It is not, you know, I haven't heard that, but I'm just saying, you know, there's so much little space here for anything. That would be something that, you know, be a no-brainer here.
Yeah.
And it's the future, and we need to be in front of it, like a lot of things, and this is a no-brainer for me.
We are about to get started on a parking area that is in that general vicinity. It'd be easy to integrate this into the parking area so as to have that capability. All right. Are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is a copy of a resolution adopted by the Pawtucket City Council that supports two bills in the House and Senate that ensure vital records are accessible to local registrars and grants local registrars authority to issue certified copies. Quickly, what happens now is, since we've centralized everything, now you have to go to the state to get your certified copies. Is that accurate for documents?
Only partially.
Partially, okay.
They have gone to an electronic version of births and now deaths, and in another month, it will be the marriages as well. And there are certain timeframes where those records are sent over to the archives, and they hold them as custodian. Now that they're electronic, the state is saying they will no longer send the cities and towns any amendments that may happen if they've been turned over to the archives. So this bill would allow the state to still give us permission to certify even though it's held by the archive.
So you're in favor of this bill?
Definitely.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we support this bill, and maybe I think if it's that important that the town council president may be able to write a resolution of our own.
I'm happy to do that.
And send it to the General Assembly.
Well, I can bring it back to you, and you can, you can agree with it if that's what you'd like to do, or either way, whatever.
I, I would trust you that you could do a good enough job to send it up to the General Assembly, so I don't think it needs to come back to the council, but that's only my opinion.
Any other discussion? So was that in the form of a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it. I thought Andrew did.
Motion is made in seconded to direct the council president to write a companion resolution to the General Assembly and keep, or along the lines of the Pawtucket City Councils. Is there further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a copy of a resolution adopted by the Charlestown Town Council requesting General Assembly enact statutes, rules, and regulations for advanced notification to a butters of a controlled blast site. I rarely say that there's something that's probably not in our bailiwick, but this is one. I don't think we have this issue. We may do blasting, but I don't think anybody's been... All right, go ahead.
No, I, I was going to make a motion to place it on file.
Thank you. Is that a motion? Is there...
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Is there further discussion? Blast site.
That was like a blast, okay?
Sounds like a blast. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Number four, a copy of a resolution adopted by the Wunsoket City Council in... in opposition to Senate Bill and House Bill, which would amend municipal employees' arbitration process. This is one that the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns has argued against. In other words, in keeping with Woonsocket's, um, efforts, this is one that we feel strongly that this allows an arbitrator of a, of a grievance to impose on a city or town as someone who doesn't live there, a tax obligation. And so it is one that we feel, as municipalities, we have felt collectively very strongly against this. I, I, it's up to you whether you think we need to weigh in. As I say, the League of Cities and Towns has made this one of their legislative priorities.
Do you just wanna send a letter in of support on it, Bob? To, either or, I mean, I don't know if you wanna make another...
I've said this before, letters of support are not what the General Assembly is looking for. They'll figure out a resolution.
Okay. Would you be willing to make another resolution on this? I know you feel very strongly of it.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the town council president makes a resolution, Town of Little Compton, not in favor of this, or disagreeing. In opposition to this, uh, um, resolution.
Not, not in opposition to the resolution, to the...
To the bills.
To the, to the Senate and the House bills.
Okay. I'll second it.
Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, nay.
Okay, thank you. The abatement list from the tax assessor.
I talked to our tax assessor on this, um, because it went for three different years. And she said that was for farm equipment, which I know farm equipment's not supposed to be taxed. So I said, "Well, what kind of farm equipment are we taxing at sixty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty dollars?" So she gave me a breakdown. Uh, it's tractor, it's a cooler, two greenhouses, mowers, and another set of, uh, two different greenhouses. So that's where she comes up with those figures. And as I said, that there is supposed to be, uh, farm equipment's supposed to be tax exempt. So I'm gonna, after talking this over with her, I'm gonna agree with the abatement list and ask for approval of the abatement list as is presented before us.
I'll second it.
Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Our final item is the payment of bills. I have a list of that. I don't believe that you've had it, had the opportunity to, to view it. I can pass it around so that you can look at it.
That's my error. I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
I know. I didn't do it. I'm sorry.
There is not on the list anything particularly noteworthy. That's not true. They're noteworthy, but they're not noteworthy in the sense of being, uh...
Of outrageous.
Thank you, Carol.
If you keep those for your records, I can still send it out so you have it for you. I apologize for not doing it earlier.
Carol, can you put a copy of that in my box? Please.
Motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Having no further business before the council, I defer to meeting adjourned. Thank you.